Lawyers.
Okay. Like to call to order the City of Flemish Planning Commission meeting. Could we please have a roll call?
Yes. Gary Connor.
Here.
Haley Green.
Here.
Van Hunzaker.
Here.
Peggy Yoder.
Here.
Darlene Rose. Joseph Sullivan. Gianna Bernardini.
Here.
Thank you.
All right, well, tonight we will start off with our approval of the minutes from last week's meeting before we move on to the public hearing on the Millpon Crossing and then a discussion of our housing chapter for the comprehensive plan update that we're working on. And then some announcements from city staff. So are there any comments or questions regarding the minutes from February 1st? Commissioner Yoder.
Very minor. On the first page, line 22, it just needs to say original document and none of the uses of citizen.
Yes.
Instead of none. And then on page four, line eight, instead of convenient store, it should be convenience store.
And Commissioner Hunzaker, you had something also?
Yeah, on page three, another just typo or whatever you want to call it. Line 17 says, Mr. Workman explained that at a policy and goal setting level, it would appropriate, it should say it would be appropriate.
Yes. Commissioner Sullivan.
Yes, on page three, line 43, the last two words should be instead of in the they should be replaced with and so it reads people and parks, not people in the parks.
Yes. Oh. Anything else? Not hearing anything. Commissioner, but Counselor Kazi.
Again, a couple of minor points on page one, lines 21 and 39. The word commissioners does not need an apostrophe. And on page three, line five, I believe there should be an additional word in there. So it read action reads action items were appropriate for the comprehensive plan, or if they should be placed in the strategic.
All in favor of approving the minutes as amended by those minor edits. Say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Sorry Chair Connor, I don't think there was actually a motion.
You know, does there need to be a motion for the minutes? I thought I was told that there didn't.
I believe that there should be a motion because we're moving to approve something and I'm going to vote on it.
I'll move to approve them.
Fair enough. I'll try to remember that in the future. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Namuses, thank you. If I could ask, was I told that there was something that did not need a motion? I know there was something.
I don't know. So I mean, if we come to a point where we're we've got that question, I can obviously address that as it appears.
All right, thank you. So now we'll move on to the public hearing on the Millpon Crossing revision. Welcome, everybody that is showed up tonight for testimony as well as the applicant. We will, today's public hearing will be reviewing file number PC 21-12 for major modification to the Millpon Crossing original subdivision approval. We'll start off with a staff report regarding the application and then the applicant's presentation, public testimony in favor of application, then public testimony in opposition and followed by neutral testimony, then the planning commission members can request, can make questions of staff. And there will then be an opportunity for rebuttals by the applicant proponents and opponents, followed by planning commission deliberations and a final decision, providing there's not a continuation. We're holding the record open. Mr. Workman, do we have a number of people? Do we know how many have asked to provide testimony in addition to the applicant?
We have just the staff report applicant presentation. I've got two individuals signed up to provide testimony in favor. There was an email that was received, we'll just reference quickly, it was received after this middle time that got forwarded out to the planning commission, but I can speak to that just briefly. And then we've got one neutral party from the county that's signed up to ours is here and may have something to say.
Okay, thank you. I think I think based on that, I don't feel that we need to put a time limit on testimony, trusting that everyone will be reasonable in their comments and hopefully not repetitive. So regarding continuance, persons testifying either orally or in writing may request a continuance to address additional documents or evidence submitted in favor of the application. If the request is made, please identify the new document or evidence during your testimony. In order to hold the record open, persons testifying may also request that the record remain open. Seven additional days to submit additional written evidence request for allowing the record to remain open should be included in your testimony. The public hearing is now open. Do any of the planning commission members wish to declare any conflicts of interests? Hearing none. Do any planning commission members wish to declare any ex parte contacts or site visits? I will start off by saying that I drove by the development today and just kind of looked at current status.
I did the same.
Okay, John? Were you going to say something, Gianna?
Oh, sorry, no, just that I I went to the site as well.
Okay. Does anyone wish to rebut these disclosures of conflict of interest, ex parte contacts or site visits? Are there any objections on jurisdictional grounds, meaning that the planning commission is not the appropriate body for this meeting? For this hearing? Right, land use decisions such as this, the case under consideration this evening are evaluated against applicable criteria from the land development code in comprehensive plan. A list of the applicable criteria for this case is available as a handout at the back of the room. And I'll throw in a little my explanation there. This is, this is a hearing for us to determine how this application meets a set of rules, not necessarily whether we like it or don't like it, but how it meets the criteria. And we can discuss all these various points in our deliberations and people can make their case during their public testimony. So we will start off now with the staff report, Mr. Workman.
Great, thank you Chair Connor and planning commission. All, just because we've got limited public involvement tonight, I've abbreviated what I would normally do in the staff report, presuming that everybody's had a chance to review. The staff report in its entirety didn't receive, but a couple of questions from individual planning commissioners about specifics in the report. So I'll be fairly brief and then try to leave more time for specific questions from the commission. But I do want to make sure that we highlight a few things for the record here. On, on, on page one, under the approval procedure, again, it's noted, we're looking at Flemish municipal code 1813030 that speaks specifically to a major modification of a previous approval. So the subdivision approval was given by the city council back in 2018. There is a minor modification that was approved in December of 2019. And so that approved for the subdivisions in place, this application is to modify what's been approved. And so in a major modification, you're basically looking at the same criteria that was used for that original approval. So we're looking at the subdivision in this case. But you're only looking for things that were affected by the changes that have been presented. Now, in this case, the changes are fairly significant and they touch on a lot of different areas. And so the staff report, I didn't try to splice and dice on what was getting reviewed or what wasn't. It's a full review. But the decision that you make will need to be based on the actual criteria, which is based on the actual modifications presented, which again is pretty much everything. So that makes a little distinction there. But there's enough changes here that that kind of went through the full show. A couple of bullet points there on what's changing basically with the approval of the subdivision, one of the conditions of approval is that a development agreement be adopted. That development agreement was spelled out and lists additional criteria in addition to what was in the municipal code at the time, additional things laying out the phasing, specific items we wanted in the park and those types of details. And that development agreement will need to be amended in order to approve this application as well. There's specific things in there that won't be relevant anymore. Things like having the pond on the park, that's a facility that's been removed and other specifics. And so when I get towards the end of the staff report, I actually have a list from the city engineer where he's gone through the development agreement, identified specific line items that will need to be adjusted. And so that development agreement approval will need to be added as a condition of approval. But again, I don't necessarily go into the nuts and bolts of all the details, a lot of it's kind of at the engineering level. But we want to make sure that gets captured here early. But as you see the bullet points, the amendment to the development agreement also would allow townhomes, the original approval did not allow for any type of townhome, multifamily, triplex, anything, and they were all limited to single family residential lots. That was the sentiment and the desire of the planning commission at the time or the city council at the time. The amendment is to allow for townhomes and we can all speak to that briefly, and I think the applicant will speak to that as well. Removal of east and west roads in the application, dedication of open space, construction of a new park in a new area, increased number of dwelling units, mitigation of wetlands up on the northern piece of the property. And then environmental review due to new location of homes and new infrastructure about methane. So that was kind of the specific criteria we looked at. But again, more generally, we kind of ran it through the whole review. Turn them up page. Just a couple of highlights again, the applicant did hold a neighborhood meeting as required in the code. Staffs reviewed the application and found it to be complete. All the material that was necessary in order to do the review was submitted in its entirety. We did receive some comments. We had one letter in favor of the application from Ben Habitat for Humanity. We also received comments from the city engineer and we received comments from the engineer at Benton County as well. And those comments have been enrolled into the staff report or into the conditions of approval. And I can point those out when we're reviewing those conditions of approval. The next section, review of the applicable criteria, given this is part, I'll try to save some time on. The review here is you go through the municipal code and any part of the code that you're required to meet criteria on in order to approve a subdivision is what the staff report looks at. So we try to be very clear to list the requirement, list what was provided or how it meets the requirements, or in many instances, the staff report identifies where a condition of approval would need to be applied in order to bring the application into compliance with the municipal code. And so there's very specific language used, you know, as a, as a condition of approval, this needs to be done. And if that's done, then then the approval can move forward. So I won't go into a lot of time again in this section here. I'm happy to answer individual questions. There's discussion on, you know, driveways and the shared driveways, the street connectivity issue is a little bit bigger topic I can address quickly. The original approval or the original application cut off. And in fact, if I could share my screen, that's probably easiest rather than trying to do it with sign language. Let me pull this up here. Okay, this is a screen too, but it doesn't look like a screen too. Let's see what's there. Are you seeing the plot map?
There it is.
Okay. So, and then just for kicks and giggles, I'll make this so that north is up. So this was what was originally submitted. Well, the original subdivision had Bullback coming through here and then it had a second street. Timothy coming here and then a third street was right here. I believe it was referred to as Headrigg Street. And so this modification that's been submitted doesn't have Timothy going through, removes Headrigg and then just includes Bullback going all the way through. I did a pretty extensive write-up in the staff report, identifying the reason why this east-west connectivity was important to the city for connectivity. The way that this was submitted, it would force all of the traffic either south to Chapel or north up to Applegate Street without any east-west connectivity. And one of the benefits as you're doing these infill projects is you want to increase that connectivity by adding these side streets and cross streets. Everybody, everybody wants to live on a cul-de-sac, but the reality is the more connectivity you have, the less traffic impact you have on any individual street or or house on that street. So the, as a condition of approval, staffs recommended punching Timothy all the way through. I've already spoken with the applicant about that and he's not opposed to that as a condition. I do include language you'd want to allow for him to be able to construct lots, buildable lots on both the north and the south side of Timothy. And I don't know the number of those lots, it'd be what is able to fit in there, but did allow for that in the condition of approval. So the condition approvals, he has to punch Timothy all the way through to 17th Street. And he would be allowed then to create additional lots on the north and the east or the north and the south side of that street. There's a few places in the staff report where I give some ranges of number of new housing units. And that's why it's because I didn't do the engineering for him and figure out how many houses that would be. So there's a little bit of a range there and how many new homes, how many new individuals would actually be here? Because there's a little uncertainty on the number of new lots that would be there, but I, I think I estimate it's close to, you know, between 15 and 24, depending on the size of lots and how they fit. So I did want to bring that up. Any questions that specifically while we're on that topic before I get off that topic?
Well, I guess I'd start off by saying that I have a bunch of questions about some of the details of the design and and a few other constraints in the staff report. But I would suggest that primarily we hold those until after the presentation by the applicant. Some of those might be answered in that format. So if there's something real critical, maybe, but I, I think we should probably limit our questions right now to maybe about the process and what was done and not done to the staff report. Does that sound appropriate to everybody or? If it doesn't, you can just question.
I'll keep cruising through then.
Well, we do have one hand up. Let me just
Okay.
Commissioner Yoder.
I just wanted a real quick clarification, Chris, when you said the additional lots north of Timothy, Timothy, you said maybe 15 or so lots, is that in addition to the 194 total already, or is that part of the 194?
Yeah, so excuse me, so the 194 is noted down here, that's what got submitted. So that would be in addition to, because right now there were no lots planned for up here. There's a wetland track right here. And so right now that was just kind of open extra park space. So with that punching through, there'd be an additional, again, however number of houses can fit along there and then along here. Putting streets in and there's a a realization putting streets in is expensive. So to require a street to go in and then not allow for development on both sides of the street would be a pretty big financial hardship to put on the developer. And so if we're going to require the road, we need to be able to allow for development on both sides of the street as well.
Thank you.
All right, let me hit just a couple of other high points. We did identify several areas for pedestrian connectivity, including the 10-foot bike path along Chapel Drive. That'll continue. There'll be a 10-foot bike path that goes north up through the park area that'll serve as a bike path as well as access to the sewer or excuse me, the storm line that's going to go underneath that area. And then, of course, within the park, there's pedestrian connectivity, kind of a large loop that goes around the outside of the park as well. Sidewalks on both sides of the streets and kind of normal city standards throughout that area. The, the shared private driveways or the private lane, those will have signage to not allow for any parking. Those would be kind of like a fire lane. There'll be signage that says no parking and there'll be additional signage that says, you know, pedestrians and bicycles on the roadway. It's a shared drive essentially, think of more like a long driveway than the street. And so it'll allow for vehicles, pedestrians and bicycles to be on it. And there's some requirements in there for signage indicating as much. Landscaping, kind of go through other and again, just because the planning commission's interested, we did just adopt some new standards for landscape strips along aerials and arterials and collectors, which Chapel Drive is. And so they did add a nice landscape buffer along Chapel Drive, rather than having houses be right up against Chapel Drive. So that was a nice improvement from the previous or the current approval. I guess if you would. Street signs, mailboxes, I'm just kind of looking through the other. I will mention, I did a write-up on the traffic impact analysis. There is a trigger on traffic impact analysis and even with the 20 to 50 houses, depending on what that number ends up being. There's enough streets and enough connectivity that there's, it's not an excessive burn on any one street. And so we did not require any new traffic impact analysis for the subdivision as part of this major modification. If it had been, I think the standard is in the code is 200, 200 trips on any one given street. But again, if you spread out number of houses, number of streets, you don't really get that impact. So, so we did not require that for the modification. There's some information on these, let's all skip through. I think I'll leave the rest of that again, especially if there's specific questions will go. I'm going to move on to page 13 of 16, which is the eight findings of fact for the major modification. Again, I won't read through those, but these are the findings that the planning commission will actually approve. If there's findings there that you don't agree with, those would be the findings that you would want to specifically modify in some way. But it's these findings that lead to the conclusion that the proposed major modification application complies with all the applicable development code sections and other applicable ordinances and regulations, or it can come into compliance, given the conditions of approval that have been recommended. So bottom of 13 is where the recommended conditions of approval come in. A lot of times these are almost word for word out of the staff report. So we take the language that was in the staff report and we just roll it over into the condition of approval. There's also language in here that was specifically came from the city engineer on language to protect the city on the development side. And then the last half a dozen or so conditions of approval came directly from Benton County in order to protect Benton County interest, specifically Chapel Drive. And then also Benton County oversees the erosion control permitting process for the city of Flemish. And so there's some specific language in there. I do want to share on my screen as part of the staff report, the development agreement revisions. So I'll share those just briefly. And then again, when we get to an actual motion, we just want to make sure that we include the modifications to the revised development agreement. So let me show that and I can hit on a few highlights there. Is that coming through okay for everybody? So again, they get pretty specific, but the recital, so it's from 166 to 194. That number will be changed to the actual number of lots based on the re-submitted plot. Depending on what happens on that along Timothy on the north, south side of Timothy. Again, except as townhomes will be allowed as reconfigured in phase three. So this is changing from only allowing individual lots to allowing for townhomes. Again, this is another townhome, one agreement number 12. Not applicable, so we would delete that one. This is another reference to townhomes, other reference to townhomes. So I guess we'll just hit them since we're there. This will change the number of lots, modify the public hearing will be right along the south side of the new park. Public parking, excuse me. So this was one of the park requirements. There will be parking, it'll just be identified on the south side of the park area. Again, changing the number lots on this one. Moving these paragraphs under agreement number 19. A lot of this had to do with phasing and when certain things were going to be done specific to the phasing. Things that were previously going to be done with mostly it's phase three or phase four or phase five are now going to be done in either phase three or phase four. Phase two B is basically just the east side of 16th Street. That infrastructure is in place other than the lines that'll, the direct sewer lines that'll connect into the sewer line on 16th Street. And the water line that runs up and down 16th Street happened into that. Otherwise, there's no new infrastructure that's being installed with phase two B. And so then phase three will essentially contain everything else. Your storm system is going to go in, your streets will go in with phase three. Chapel Drive will be rebuilt and completed in phase three. So the vast heavy lift of all of the infrastructure is all going to go in at one time with phase three. And then phase four, as shown on the phasing map, is just kind of that smaller section of townhomes that are right up against Chapel Drive. That'll kind of come in after phase three is all done. So there's a, there's a sequencing there. Again, I would turn your attention to the findings specifically and the conditions of approval and the specific language there. But on the bottom of the staff report, there is a motion to approve the major modification, or if there's a specific finding that needs to be revised, that's contrary to approval. We need to revise that finding by way of motion and then we can make a recommendation to deny the application based on that finding in opposition to approval. And with that, I'll go ahead and conclude my staff report and afford answering questions later in the hearing.
And, and I, I think we can ask a few questions if we need to, just to get context. But we'll try to reserve most of our questions for after we hear all the presentations. But I do have one brief question myself to start off. Can you repeat what those agreements were that you went over and where they came from and what they mean?
Yeah, so the agreements are in the actual development agreement, which as a condition of approval needs to be approved with this major modification. So the original subdivision approval required that a development agreement be entered into that specified the phasing of when different aspects of the infrastructure would go in. It also limited development to only be single family residential. It provides some specifics of what would go into the park. And so those things that are changed with this new layout have to be changed in the development agreement.
Yes, okay. Are there any other kind of overarching questions? Before we go to the applicant's presentation. Commissioner Yoder.
Thank you, but the, the, what the modification to revisions, I think what Chris just went over, that wasn't supplied to us. Right? I don't remember seeing that before this, before today, I inform right now.
Yeah, the, I think the way the staff report said is that that the developer would be required to enter into a revised development agreement that reflects the changes in the approval. Uh we that the developer would be required to enter into a revised development agreement that reflects the changes in the approval. And I just felt like that wasn't specific enough um. It would work, it would hold them accountable and um but I did ask the engineer to go through and specify. Those for you, so we'd have those all written out. Um I can email those out, but. Um the condition of approval, I could find the number, I think it's number. Anybody else sees it before I do that refers to the development agreement? Well, maybe I did pull that one out because I'd asked for this to get done first, so I think just when there's a. A motion was need to mo- uh move. Uh amend the motion. To include specific. Amendments to the development agreement as outlined by the city engineer.
Okay, and and that's. And all that's really doing is saying that the old development agreement needs to be modified to match everything that we've been discussing.
Right.
Just in these um. Conditions.
Yeah, any of the, any of the changes there are reflected in the staff report itself and the conditions of.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. So um. At this time, I'll remind those testifying that you should direct your testimony toward the applicable criteria of the case. Or other criteria in the municipal code. Comprehensive plan or land development code which you believe apply to the decision. Failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements of evidence sufficient to afford the city or other parties the opportunity to respond to the issue. Precludes appeals to the state land use board of appeals based on that issue. The failure of the applicant to raise constitutional or other issues relating to proposed conditions of approval. With sufficient specificity. To allow. The local government to respond to the issues precludes and applicate an action for damages in circuit court. We will now hear the applicant's presentation.
I'm gonna mute here and make sure that they're good on the other room, I'll be right back. Okay, sound check, one, two, three.
We hear you fine.
All right. And. Mister Miller's got a presentation prepared, so we'll go ahead and share the screen, let me get that set up for him. One of these buttons right there. Which buttons?
Um, my name is Levi Miller, I'm the owner of Mill Pond Crossing and the development company MPC Builders. My presentation tonight is gonna basically kind of go over the entire project from when we started back in two thousand eighteen. To where we're at today and then obviously why am I submitting this? Major modification and the reason for the request. So Mill Pond Crossing started back in the winter of two thousand eighteen. As a mission to provide affordable homes. To the citizens of Flemish, the residents. Um Lee Miller of Militimer Services approached me and. Basically was frustrated that none of his employees had the opportunity to buy homes in Flemish and they were all commuting. A long ways away, so he approached me and said, hey, you know, can we, can you build affordable homes in Flemish? And I said, absolutely, I said, it comes down to. A pretty simple equation. Land plus development cost plus building cost equals the the value of the home that we're gonna sell. Um land being a large component of that. Um and part of what we started with in Mill Pond Crossing was that we would do. All three of those things in-house and Mill Pond Crossing, we would buy the land. We would do the entitlements, we would do the development, we would build the homes. And sell them to the final end user, the the home buyers. Um most developments. Uh someone buys the land, they take it through entitlements, then they sell to developer. That developer in turn sells it to a home builder who then builds the homes and sells it. So the goal with Mill Pond Crossing day one was to do all three of those things in-house to eliminate middleman. And try to, you know, keep our costs down as low as possible to provide uh an affordable house. For the residents of Flemish. Um as far as easy, as far as the equation goes, the land was pretty straightforward, you know. We bought the land, X amount of money divided by the number of lots, that's our per unit cost. Um on the development side. You know, our frontage cost, know the length of a lot. On the street, that's your frontage cost, so a sixty-five foot wide lot. Is gonna cost X amount per foot times sixty-five feet, if you're lucky, you get lots on both sides, so you can cut that in half. Um at Mill Pond, to keep our frontage costs down, to keep our per lot cost down. We went with a narrow lot, that some people probably wondering why we want such a narrow lot to thirty-eight foot wide as our, as our standard lot size. That was simply just because a sixty-five foot wide lot is twice as much money as thirty-five, thirty-eight foot wide lot, so. By going with a narrower lot, we were able to keep our development costs down. And then building costs, that's just the cost of the home. That equals the the final price of the home that we're gonna sell. Um when we started this project in two thousand eighteen, we had a hearing in May of two thousand eighteen. Um I think we all can agree, the world was a much different place four years ago. Um development cost, building cost um significantly increased the last four years. And then obviously not to mention the the cost increase and the and the difficulties of COVID, so. For the last, you know, year and a half, two years, we have faced unprecedented. Challenges and pressure on our development costs. And our building cost, which has made. The the price of the homes that we're selling has been nearly impossible to keep at the level we wanted to. Initially, when we first submitted this plan to the city council in May two thousand eighteen. This is what we submitted, um phase one. Was gonna have thirty-three lots. It was a pretty straightforward phase one development. Um we were gonna do a three-quarter street improvement on fifteen street, um fifteen street. The sewer and water was already uh two-thirds of the way down fifteen street um. Based on our feasibility studies we did when we, before we bought the property, at the same time we were doing the city council hearing. Um we assumed that we were going to just tie into the sewer and water line and extend it four hundred feet. Um the city's stormwater master plan um was pretty detailed and it showed a single twenty-four inch storm line. On the east side of fifteen street to handle all the stormwater. So we use that as our assumption based on or or cost. And when we did this hearing, um a resident on Willow Lane. Brought up how, you know, Willow Lane being a lane was supposed to be a small, quiet road. And our initial plan, as you can see here. Was using Willow Lane as as the main entrance to the subdivision, it would be the entrance of sixteen street, which would provide most of the connectivity into the subdivision. Um that resident testified at the hearing in May two thousand eighteen and said that wasn't right. And I agreed with her, I and I told her, I said, I didn't even pay attention and I apologized. So we made a change. And we ended up adding a street called Timothy Street and Timothy Street was going to be the the entrance into the subdivision. And Willow Lane would have no interaction at all with um. With Mill Pond Crossing, other than, you know, a new sidewalk that we built. Um by making that change, um phase one went down to to twenty-two lots instead of thirty-three lots. Um so right off the get-go, we lost quite a few lots on phase one. Once we got our approval with this, once we got our subdivision approved. And we went into engineering, um we we found a lot of things. Um first, um the water and sewer line, which we were going to just do a simple extension. Uh required a complete rebuild, going all the way back to Willow Lane, so we did it, we had to do, instead of four hundred feet of sewer and water line, we had to do twelve hundred and thirty feet of sewer and water line. Um the stormwater master plan, which showed a single twenty-four inch water pipe, storm pipe. Um once we did all the calculations per the city of Flemish design standards, um that determined that we actually needed two. Thirty-inch pipes, not one twenty-four inch pipes, that raised our prices significantly, raised our costs significantly. Another one um or agree with the city was to do just a three-quarter inch, a three-quarter. Street improvement on the fifteen street, um once we got into. The design standards, um we, even though we were only gonna build three-quarters of fifteen street. We needed to do a full design of fifteen street. And get that tire design approved in order to do or three-quarter improvement. Um had the area fifteen street been flat, that would have been. No big deal, but as you guys are probably well aware, the majority of fifteen street on the west side is significantly lower. Than the street, so in order to accomplish that. Design requirement and approval requirement, we would have had to either procured right away. From property owners on the west side of fifteen street. Or would have had to obtained easements or bodiesments. Um that from a timing standpoint, cost standpoint was unfeasible. So we decided that shifting fifteen street to. The the east by about ten feet would eliminate the need for right away procurement or easements. It still allows to do a full street design, full street approval. Um shifting the street itself was relatively simple. Um there was power line there that we had to relocate, uh most of those poles were already in bad shape, so the power company quoted me. Um ten thousand dollars a pole, so I was like, okay, there's five poles, fifty thousand bucks, that's relatively inexpensive to keep project moving forward. Uh the power company unfortunately would not give us the design nor a quote until we had approved engineering plans from the city. Um so once we got that street approved and we submitted to the power company. What I was expecting to be about a fifty thousand dollar price tag ended up being a quarter million dollar price tag to move those power lines. So phase one, to recap, went from thirty-three to twenty-two lots. And we had significant price increases from sewer waterline extensions. Additional storm pipe by double, plus we had to do a whole new power line, so. Right off, right of the get-go, we were already significantly over budget while we're still trying to maintain affordability. Then we got into phase two, so phase two. Initially, going back to our initial plan, phase two was going to bring us down from seventeen street. Tie into sixteen street and pop out of Willow Lane, going back to. The. The frontage cost is talking about, you know, the goal with phase two was that we would be able to get. Lots on both sides of the street, enabling us to get. You know, reduce our total cost even more on phase one. We had to basically rebuild an entire street and we only got twenty-two lots out of it, so our efficiencies in phase one were awful. Um phase two initially, you know, we were hoping to get, you know, basically extremely efficient phase two. Have great development, um get our development costs down super low. With the redesign we did on phase two, um once we got into. The engine requirements or storm tract A, um initially, we were going to just pipe that to the north end. And then we would let the stormwater flow through the storm tract A and then discharge at the south center chapel. Um we, once we're in the, once we're into the design requirements with the city. It became clear that they wanted us to pipe the stormwater. All the way down sixteen street down to what in this graphic is shown as lot ninety-one. Between lot ninety, ninety-one, move that stormwater over into storm track day and then discharge out. Um so to run that storm line down. Sixteen street to grab what was initially gonna be or proposed phase two. Was gonna be about a thousand feet of storm line and then in construction, you know, you wanna do the deepest. You don't wanna just do the, you know, the top pipe, you wanna do your deepest pipe, so. To have maintained our original phase two. We would have had to have done the sewer, because it's the deepest, plus. The storm line to tie into tract A to develop or initial proposed phase two. That obviously was gonna be extremely expensive, because we'd basically be doing sewer and storm for a street that we weren't building. Plus do in the initial phase two, so at that point, we did a an app, a a design. A modification, a minor modification back in December of two thousand and nineteen. To change phase two. To what is shown here. That was great from a standpoint of getting our storm installed. But you can see here from phase two, again, we were super inefficient on our lot count. Um while we were fishing up at Timothy Street, once again, you know, we had. Twenty-two lots only on one side of the street, so we weren't getting or doubling up that we were hoping for. On top of that. Phase two. Had a bunch of other challenges as well, one of the challenges we faced was with the rising cost in phase one. To counter those increased costs and to try and put some downward pressure back on the development side. Um I got the idea to self-perform development of phase two. I hired a couple guys and they convinced me that we could. Do in-house development and not so contracted out to a site contractor and that I would save money. So we attempted to self-perform the work. Um on top of that, going back to the stormwater. Um again, on fifteen street, we had to add the two stormpipes when we got to phase two, the design, stormwater design. Showed that we still needed additional two thirty-inch stormpipes to convey the water from the north of our property down to chapel. That was about a million dollars of increased cost, um we decided to defer that storm system to phase three. To help. Put downward pressure on. Or face to cost, we could still try and maintain some level of affordability in the homes. By deferring those stormpipes to phase three, which is supposed to have hap-. And right after phase two. Um obviously, phase three has not happened yet, and that is why we have a ditch on Willow Lane that is still. On backflip, because we gotta leave that ditch open until we get storm system in. So that was some of our challenges of phase two, um we also an attempt to. Save money on interest, loan costs, we were going to build the street and build the homes at the same time. We had done that in phase one and we had pretty strong success. When fifteen street was done, we had a half dozen homes ready to occupy. We really had no major issues building the homes in phase one with fate, with the same time and built the street. Um we attempted that again in phase two. We did not have the same results in phase two, um building the homes at the same time, build the street turned out to to not work out at all. And then on top of that, in phase two, phase two, we started. Um in the spring of two thousand and twenty, we're getting final plans approved, May, June of two thousand twenty. Um working on lending in in May of two thousand twenty. And these guys are all aware of COVID, you know, hit us in end of March, April, we had significant economic shutdowns. Um COVID hit the project hard from two standpoints. Um one is what you guys are all aware of, the supply chain issues, you know, um cabinets. Um windows, standard manufactured items, appliances went from being readily available. In stock to only week or two weeks out, became no two, three months of procurement, um lumber, you know. Tripled in price PVC, doubled in price copper, so COVID has put tremendous, tremendous pressure. On our building costs, um to the point where, you know, what's, what we initially estimated back in. Two thousand eighteen to today, the costs are, you know, fifty percent, seventy percent higher, they're not even comparable. Another thing too about COVID, which a lot of people don't know this, but with the lending side. In May, June, two thousand twenty, when we were working on getting our lending approved for phase two. The lender that we used for phase one, their local bank and they're like, no, the economy's shutting down, we're. We're, we're not loaning more money out, you're on your own, so we switched to a different lender. That lender was willing to lend us money, but they wanted to see. All the lots pre-sold to know that if we built the project, we had homes already sold. So we pre-sold all of the homes at once in phase two, um forty-two lots. And initially, when we're gonna build phase two for COVID hit, we're gonna build eight at a time, sell them. And initially when we're going to build phase two for COVID hit, we're going to build eight at a time, sell them and, you know, have a nice, easy construction schedule. Buyers would be, you know, buying homes that are almost finished and it'd be relatively. Streamlined, um, with having to pre-sell everything at once in July, August of two thousand and twenty. We had forty-two buyers who waited around, you know, some of them for, you know, over a year. Um, that caused a lot of frustrations on, you know, the buyer's side because like, once my house can get done, once my house is going to start. And that obviously wasn't on purpose. Um, you know, we had no intention of that being such a stressful time for those buyers. But in order to get the lending to do phase two, we had to. You know, basically pre-sell those homes and, you know, obviously construction took longer than we, we thought. So. There's a lot of frustrations on buyers having to wait a lot longer than we initially told them to buy their homes. And that's why, you know, some people, if, if, if anyone's heard why it takes so long for somebody to get their homes built. That's exactly the reason we had to pre-sell everything way early. And then just with all the delays of self-performing the street, the challenge of COVID, all that, it just led to a lot of delays and some homes being delivered. And then on top of that, we have, if that was enough, we have obviously the methane. Um, when this project was proposed back in two thousand eighteen, um, there was a lot of public testimony. About the environmental concerns of the site. Um, I spent a significant amount of money to investigate that site before I even bought the property. Um, spent over a hundred thousand dollars doing a phase one, phase two, and even an additional phase three study on the property. Um, all the testimony we heard from the public, the newspaper articles we read, the history of the site was we're led to believe there'd be oil contamination. Uh, garbage dumped on the site, um, buried cars, buried batteries, you know, the whole gamut of. Solid waste is what we're led to believe was out there. So we. Did forty, fifty test borings. We dug another thirty to forty test holes. Um, we found no evidence of any of that contamination. All of the tests we did came back clean. There was some concern that there might be some additional contaminants down in the southeast corner of the site. Where the old mill sat. So after we got the project approved, I bought the property, entered into the voluntary clean program at DEQ. To ensure that, you know, if we did run to any contaminants, especially with the mills that, that it'd be taken care of correctly to, you know. To ensure that, you know, the, everything was environmentally safe. At no point did my consultants, did public testimony, at no point at all, when we're going through this, did anyone raise the concern of methane. I didn't even think of it. I wasn't even aware of it. And it wasn't until we had most of phase one almost done occupied, that methane was brought up by DEQ. And we tested for nothing, um, promptly, well, as fast as we could as code was going on, so by the time we got everybody organized. And we found, we found methane. Um, clearly, if I had known there's nothing out there before I bought the property, we would have done things a lot differently. So the methane has become another massively. Increased. Price of the development, which again has just added to the upward pressure. On, you know, trying to maintain affordability, which is what we've been trying to do from day one is affordability. We are trying to, you know, provide affordable homes and between the increased development cost, COVID, methane, we have had. Unbelievable pressure. And increased pricing to where in its current form. The way that the subdivision is designed and proved, it is impossible to, to continue that mission. So right now, the project is at a crossroads. I have an approved subdivision. We have a hundred and nine, hundred and ten lots left to develop. I can take the proof subdivision that we currently have in place. And I can develop the lots. I can hire the site contractor. We can set up the bid. I can have them develop the whole thing for me and I could sell the finished lots off to one or two or three or four builders at, you know. Current retail prices. And they can come build homes in the five, fifty, six, hundred thousand range and, you know, the project can, can move on. But it would not be affordable. Option two. Is what has led us to tonight and my major modification. And that option. Is to. Complete the mission. Continue the mission. And find a way to decrease costs. And to continue affordability. And maintain affordable homes that we had started with in phase one or two, which we currently are unable to, to do. So as Chris showed you guys in the staff report, here is the new plan. And Millstone Crossing is an ideal location. For an affordable neighborhood. It's walking distance to all four schools. It's a perfect spot to continue the affordability mission. Um, the park obviously would be relocated. Um, the initial design of the park. Was incorporate an existing pond feature. As we got into the development and we started in some initial park design work with the city, um, park department. We realized that that park was actually in a horrible location. It was ill-conceived. Uh, Chapel Drive was an extremely busy street. Actually, it's, I almost call it a highway to Kendra, but. With truck traffic on at the speeds of it, it's extremely unsafe place to put a park. The noise, the pond, the pond raised a lot of concerns, you know, how do we deal with the, the. The safety issue of the pond and all that. So. Moving the park up to where it's currently shown in this plot amendment. Is a much, much better park location. And on top of that, you know, we obviously get the affordability of the townhomes and why are we going to townhomes? Obviously, you know, the townhomes is, is not ideal. You know, we proposed the development. As a single family detached subdivision for a reason, you know, that's what we wanted. We wanted the townhome, we wanted the, we want people to buy. Homes, um, but obviously with the, the increased cost we have, um. Building single-family detached homes right now is just, it's unattainable right now to keep our costs where they need to be for, for affordability. So I go off townhomes, we were able to get, you know, the, the lots only twenty feet wide, we're able to get our development costs cut in half. Um, building townhomes is obviously more efficient because we have shared walls, we have shared roofs. So we get. Economy scale to, to build townhomes. The townhome model. Is really the only way that we can move forward with the mission. And that is obviously affordability for the first time home buyers who otherwise would, would not have an opportunity to, to buy home and are currently paying, you know, horrible. Rents or having to buy, you know, used houses that they have to go and spend a hundred thousand dollars to rehabilitate, et cetera. A lot of people have raised the concerns of, well, if you're doing townhomes. You, they're going to turn into, to rental markets. It's going to be bought by investors and it's going to turn into, you know, a rental. Subdivision and not a family subdivision. And I completely agree with those concerns. In phase one and phase two, we actually had about a half dozen to eight. Investors, I would use words sneak in. They snuck in and, and bought homes. Um, that was not intent. I did not know there are investors buying homes until literally after they bought the home, must offer rent sign in the front yard. Um, that was extremely irritating to me and frankly, it, it, it pissed me off because, you know, I spent a lot of work. Um, and basically subsidized phase one and phase two, um, to provide affordable homes for, for someone buyers. And to see people buy them as investment properties and, and literally make a hundred thousand dollars. Immediately in equity and plus make extremely high rents off of my hard work. It's frustrating. So. I completely agree with the townhomes not going to investors. And so to prevent that, I am partnering with Habitat for Humanity. To help with the coordination of new buyers. To ensure that those buyers are in fact truly people who are for someone buyers or are buyers. That will occupy those homes and to prevent to the greatest extent possible to not sell any of them to, to investors or as rentals. Um, obviously Millstone Crossing has had extremely large amount of challenges. I've, I've explained most of them to you. There are some additional concerns that I've heard from the public and residents of Millstone Crossing. I'd like to take that address now. Um, one of them is that there's currently vacant lot at the corner of fifteenth and Timothy Street. Um. That is lot number thirty-two. Um, that lot was going to be built in phase two. Um, we had a buyer who wanted a specific, uh, single story. We didn't get designed in time to meet the, or, or construction sequencing. So that got kicked to the end of phase two. We're going to build that same time we basically started phase three. Um, with the. No permitting stoppage last May, um, that lot has been put on hold. Um, that lot is not abandoned. We just simply cannot get a permit for that lot right now. As soon as we, you know, are able to start construction again, we'll immediately get that lot permitting, get that lot built. So that lot is, is not a vacant abandoned lot. So that law will be built on as soon as we're able to. Um, additional concern is obviously Chapel Drive, Chapel Drive, you know, is, is not improved yet. Um. That was by design, um, to help limit or upfront costs as much as possible. Chapel Drive was to be done with phase three. Um, Chapel Drive was almost all but approved back in May of last year. The goal was to, uh, build, uh, to rebuild Chapel Drive as a three-quarter street improvement with new. Curb sidewalk, storm drainage, new asphalt that we're going to do that last summer. Um, obviously with the worst stoppage that we had with the methane, that work has not happened yet. Um, as soon as we are able to start construction again, um, Chapel Drive will be one of the hurt first things we, we do. Um, hopefully that will be the summer. And a lot of people, other people have brought concerns of, you know, Chapel Drive flooding. Uh, first of all, all Millstone Crossing homes are built above the floodplains. So no house at Mill Pond can flood. Um, I know this winter we had some flooding on the north ditch of Chapel between fifteenth and sixteen street. Um, that was because the outfall that was. Part of the improvements we're going to do with Chapel Drive was going to, to, to tie that in. Um, we were going to do it last summer. Obviously with the Chapel Drive was not improved. We, you know, there was something, there was a, a catch place in that did not get installed. Um. Once we realized that we had some flooding going on and that water was not drainage, we got that, we got that corrected. But the majority of the additional flooding that we saw this winter with that ditch overflowing on, on the north side of chapel will be taken care of when we, when we finish improving Chapel Drive. Um, also a concern is there's too many houses, um, going back, let's say about the townhomes. Um, I agree, you know, townhomes are not ideal. Um, but again, to get the affordability where it needs to be. We have to make this change to go with the townhome model and increase density. Otherwise, the, the development costs are too high. And we just cannot get to where we need to be affordable at. And we therefore then have to sell the lots retail to another builder and they build homes that, you know, five, sixty, seven thousand dollars. So. The townhome model, while it's not perfect, is really truly the only way to get the affordability where we need to be. And, you know, we're still doing, you know, forty-five, fifty, single-family lots with the townhomes. So we're not going to a completely townhome model. But the townhome lot count we came up with is kind of that sweet spot. Of where we really need to be to build, to take care of all of our development costs. All the carryover costs from phase one and phase two, the methane cost and. Be able to still, you know, get the project done. And be afford, at a affordable rate. So that's why we have the increased lot count and going to townhomes. Um, obviously moving forward, uh, what we did in phase two with the. Construction of the street and houses simultaneously, um, it failed. I'm, I'll, I'll admit it. That was, that failed miserably. Like I said, in phase one, it worked. Phase two, it was a disaster. So moving forward, you know, obviously part of the development agreement, um, with phase three, you know, we would obviously have the park installed. Chapel Drive would be complete. We'd have the other streets done before we did building permits. Um, you know, that's, you know, the city is requiring that. I'm a complete agreeant with that. And like I said, phase two, that experiment, it didn't work. So we're not going to re, recreate that wheel. So. A lot of frustrations, I think you guys have heard about the development with, you know, the houses being delayed, building the streets in time with houses. Um. We're not going to do that anymore. Uh, moving forward, um. About a month ago, someone asked me, why, why am I even doing this? Why am I even submitting this plan? Why don't I just sell? Well, I just finished the subdivision out. I have a hundred and nine lots approved. All I had to do is get engineering approved, finish up with methane, you know, studies. And, uh, why even, why even, why even go through this, this exercise? Um, it's much easier to just take the subdivision I have that's already approved and it's much easier to just pay someone to finish the development for me and sell lots. It's. It's way easier. Um, to still move forward with the townhome model with the. The amount of work I have to do to do the affordability. It's, it's, it's a very, it's a, it's a, it's a large amount of work. A lot of challenges still lie ahead of me. Um, up to date, all the decisions I made, I've explained a lot of them to you guys the last several minutes. Um, I have made some good decisions and I have made some bad decisions. All of the decisions that I have made regarding Millstone Crossing. Have all been for the spirit of affordability, trying to find a way to continuously try and put. Downward pressure on ever increasing costs. I own every single decision I've made. Some have been horrible decisions. But I own every single one of them, but it was all done for the spirit of affordability. Why do I want to continue? Every single day I wake up, Millstone Crossing is a fight. I wake up ready to go to war. I have to deal with the state. I have to deal with the county. I have to deal with the residents. It is a war every day I wake up. And I am willing to put that fight on. For affordability. I easily could develop what is approved. And financially, personally, it would be better for me to go that route. So why am I, why am I submitting this application to you tonight? Why am I taking this on? These are direct quotes from letters I've received or from conversations I've had people. Levi has made the American dream possible for our family and we are forever grateful. Homeownership wasn't something we ever saw ourselves pursuing as it seemed too expensive. If it wasn't for Levi, we would not own a house. The affordability of Millstone Crossing has given us an opportunity we otherwise would not have had. So the decision. I currently still have a hundred and sixty families still on the waiting list for Millstone Crossing. These are a hundred and sixty families that have been pre-approved. Whether pre-approved for is not what we can currently build houses for. The proposed change that I have submitted to you guys with this application. Will allow me to build affordable homes for approximately a hundred and three of those families. It won't get all of them. But it will get a lot more than I would get if I kept the subdivision as it's currently designed. With all the challenges this project has faced the last four years. This decision tonight is not about Millstone Crossing. It's not about me personally. This is about affordability of homes for the residents of the city of Fulham. I believe this application meets the criteria set forth by the city of Fulham. And should be approved. And that's the conclusion of my presentation.
Okay. Well, thank you very much, um, Mr. Miller. Um. Are there any questions, um, from the planning commissioners for the applicant? Commissioner Sullivan.
Yeah, I know there's probably going to be a bunch of questions. So I was kind of. Wondering if I should just wait and see what everybody else asks, but I, I had kind of one main one that was burning in my head that I had to ask. Um, first off, thanks for that presentation. Uh, it really helps clarify the journey you're going through and, and where you're headed. Um, there was one part that confused me a little bit. However. Um, you were talking about, uh, a formula, kind of what the slide you started off where you're talking about land. Uh, cost plus, uh, development costs. Um. And permitting costs and then the cost of actually building the house equals, you know, the, the home price. And I understand that if you add those things up, that, that's what it costs you to build the home. But for most, uh, developers, it has nothing at all to do with the price that they're sold at. Um, and so keeping the cost of the house low or whatever is mostly about making sure that, you know, you're protecting your profit margin. And I understand you guys have had a lot of really bad luck and you're trying to salvage this whole thing. And, you know, my hat's off to you for that. It looks like a difficult. A difficult ride. And so I'm definitely not trying to make. Life harder on you than it has to be. And honestly, those kinds of questions probably have nothing to do with the factual basis for our decision to set anyway. Or for the, for the, the eventual decision we'll have. The question is. Um, how does the cost? To you to build a home or a townhouse have anything to do with the price? Because my understanding is that the price is just set by the market, by what the banks will lend and kind of the buyers that are around. And recently we've seen buyers apparently willing to pay just about anything. Or, or in other words, are you doing something different than most developers, i.e. saying, hey, we're not going to make profit on this or we're only going to make. You know, so many thousands of dollars of profit and you're literally like reducing the asking price based. You know, so many thousands of dollars of profit and you're literally like reducing the asking price based on how much it costs you to build?
That's that is exactly it. Put perspective, I have left five million dollars on the table in phase one and two. I would have five more million dollars in my checking account. Had I sold Mill Pond Crossing at market rate. Moving forward. I could sell these lots and I could sell these homes for probably a hundred thousand dollars more than I want to. So I am artificially keeping my pricing below market value for the sake of the mission. And that is why the project crossroads, because, you know, right now with all my my rising costs, it's like, okay, I have to cover my cost. So do I go with the easy route, which is just develop the lot, sell them to somebody else, make as much money possible? And affordability goes out the window. At that point, they're sold for five fifty six hundred thousand dollars. Or do I go the route, which I've submitted to you guys tonight, which is to continue? To basically not sell homes at market value and say, okay, this is what it's going to cost me to complete the project. How much? How many lots do I need to pay for development? How many lots do I need to pay for my overages on phase one and two? How much do I need to, you know, basically, you know? Do make some profit. But no, there is a very artificial price point that I am setting for the development. And it's based on. What is considered affordable? I mean, that's why we're working Habitat Habitat, you know, we've already went through a couple scenarios where they say, no, this is the price point we need townhomes at. And I'm like, okay, you know, this is what we're going to do to get that price point. And we're talking about selling townhomes for, you know. Low three hundreds, maybe even try and get some even lower than that. I think the goal right now for a townhome and, you know, Curvallis is. For a fifteen square foot townhome is like four ninety nine. You know, single family homes right now are sold for five ninety nine at the lowest. So, you know, when I'm sitting here trying to, you know, keep my pricing in the. The the low to mid fours for for single family homes and being the threes for townhomes. That's not a market rate. That's me trying to sell what is quote unquote affordable. And not what is a market rate. I mean, I could make, I can make a killing. I can make a lot of money if I sell these homes at a market rate. But that's not the mission. That's not why Lead Mill and Mill Timber Services brought me on board this project. That's not why we've started this project, and that's not why I want to finish the project. I want to finish this project so people can continue to tell me that it wasn't for me. They wouldn't have a home. I want those people to have homes, and I do not want this to just go to people who can afford homes at five hundred thousand dollars, five fifty, six hundred or investors. I want people who currently do not have a house, do not have the opportunity to have a house. I want them to have that house. That is what I am doing. Does that answer your question?
That, yes, no, that that does help immensely. The, I think. The idea of affordable housing is something that pretty much all of us can get behind. The question, the sort of lingering question that I'm I'm just circling a little bit. Is most of the time when I hear someone or an organization say, hey, we're here to provide X service to the community. Usually that's coming from a not-for-profit company, right? And so I can say, oh, they're for one C three not-for-profit, and then I know that, you know, that's the truth. In your guys' case, I don't think you guys are a not-for-profit. Do you have any sort of, you know, is there, you know what I'm saying? Is there a formula or is there a program? Or something that's got kind of got some state accreditation? Or is it, is it anything other than just, you know? My apologies, but your word saying that these are affordable houses.
Oh, no, I mean, no, they're, I mean. Phase one and phase two, we're definitely not, we're not a profitable company. That is for sure. We're nonprofit up till now. No, we are, we are not a, we are not a nonprofit. We are not, we we are receiving no government government assistance. I think the fact that I've sold homes at two forty nine, up to three fifteen, phase one and phase two. I think clearly shows that, you know, I am trying to keep my word. Again, I could have easily sold homes for, you know. Literally five million dollars more than I have. I mean, the market rate is significantly higher than when we started. And I could have sold those homes for a lot more money, but I didn't because that's not the mission. So no, is there a set formula? That says we're going to sell these homes for this benchmark? No, it's, it is a simple equation of what are my costs? With a little bit of profit and I'm going to sell these homes for the least amount possible. Am I going to lose money? I don't, of course not. Well, that's the goal anyway. Am I going to sell them for market rates? Of course not. I mean, you guys, you guys know the market rates are, you know, townhomes, and I just said townhomes are four ninety nine and, you know, five fifty, six hundred plus for single family homes. We're not going to be there. Habitat has a formula on the eighty percent, sixty percent, you know, for income that we are going to strive our hardest to get down there. And we, you know, we're going to try our best. But no, at the end of the day, there is no set formula. It's just affordability to me is just, you know. What is a house that people can buy that currently is not being offered? And I believe that is still in the three hundred thousand price point. No one else is even close to that. No one else is even in the mid four hundreds. So if I'm mid three hundreds, I'm a lot more affordable than everybody else. So that's, that's. When I say affordability, that's the benchmark is trying to keep my prices as low as possible. Is there a set formula? Is there a set dollar amount? No, there's, there's not. But I think my history of what I've done so far, phase one and phase two. Proves that the mission is there, that I am trying my best to sell these homes at a price point that no one else is even remotely touching. And that I'm obviously, you know, not getting rich off this project. I could, but I'm not. So I, I mean. I'm doing the best I can as, you know, as a private citizen, as a private business owner, do my part. But no, there is, there is, to go back to your question, though, there is no, there is no set parameters that I'm going off affordability for me is just, you know, there's just, you know, it's just a generic term. Of, you know, what can someone afford that is currently not in the market?
Thank you. Commissioner Yoder.
Thank you, Levi. And Flemish does have an obligation to provide, you know, housing to all different levels of income. And currently, right now, we are going through our housing, our comp plan and chapter three on housing. Trying to determine what's best for Flemish of where certain things should be, where certain housing styles should be. And one of them that the Echo Northwest does say about low income. Because it's affordable housing and Habitat for Humanity has actually mentioned that they want. Low and moderate families, income families to be able to live in those townhomes. And a low income family in Benton County can pay a thousand dollars a month. Or purchase a two hundred and fifteen thousand dollar home. That's what a low income family. Can purchase. So clearly, these are not. Low income for low income families, and I don't know where anywhere right now where a private builder can. Build homes without being subsidized somehow. To be able to build these homes. And so I don't know if we just kind of throw around a little bit too loosely. The term affordable housing. Below market housing would probably be a really good, maybe a better term. And then also I see that you're going to have an HOA. In there, which is, I don't know if I've ever seen. A development targeted for low income housing to have an HOA, which is a monthly fee. Right? I don't know what your monthly fee might be for the HOA to help offset some of the costs. Do you have any idea what? The fee on top of it, these houses would be?
The HOA is a mechanism for the shared maintenance of the townhomes. If we're doing an eightplex, you obviously, you know, have common walls, you have a common roof, you have, you know, the the common alleyway. So the HOA is not a traditional HOA in a sense where they're going to be doing no common area landscaping. You know, you know, making, you know, whatever it is. The HOA is simply a mechanism to make sure that the common areas of the townhomes. Are maintained correctly. So there's no, there's really no other way. To to do the the shared, you know, the maintenance of the roofs, the shared walls without an HOA. So this is not an HOA that's going to charge a hundred dollars a month. We're going to have a clubhouse, the pool, you know, none of that. It's just simply a way to handle. The maintenance obligations of basically, you know, an apex. So that's, that's why we're doing the HOA is just to handle that maintenance responsibilities.
So the HOA, like when a new roof needs to come on, it's not going to be the responsibility of the individual homeowner or? It it would be.
Well, the eight, so an eightplex, so we're going to be, so the the proposed plan is to do eight townhomes as as one building. You cannot replace. You know, fifteen percent of that roof, you have to replace the entire roof. So all eight of those homeowners have to come together to replace that roof. If you need siding replacement in an eightplex, you need all eight owners of that townhome eightplex to participate. You can't have one person pay for. All the site, you can't have one person pay for all the roofing. So you have eight homes, eight townhomes that share those common roof, common siding. So that is what the HOA is for. The HOA is to ensure that when the time comes for that maintenance, there is no issues of someone saying, well, I'm not going to pay my part. Well, if the roof is your place, roof needs to replace, you're not going to replace, you know, for the eight units, you're not going to go up there and, you know. Patch mark, you know, the roof, you're going to have to replace all the roof, it's replaced all of a sudden. So that's, that's the way the HOA is for maintenance. So if you have a single family home. Single family home does not have those requirements because you need a new roof. It's just your roof. The townhomes, you know, if you need a roof, there's eight parties that are responsible for that new roof. Does that make sense? Because like right now, we don't, right now, we have no HOA. Right now, there is no HOA Mill Pond Crossing. All, there's one phase two, there's no HOA because there's no need for it.
Thank you. Commissioner Hunsicker.
Thank you.
You're on mute, Van. You're still muted. Can you hear me, Van?
Yeah, I I had muted myself. Sorry about that. Levi, the methane gas. What, I mean, could you just in a, generally speaking, what's going to have to happen to get rid of that? Or do you, or do you even know yet?
Um, we are working on, I have my methane consultant PBS Brett, he's on board. I might have him jump in here to answer the question. Moving forward, the plan right now is to, you know, the stuff we haven't built yet, the the plan is to remove the organic material. That's, you know, in the ground, the the organic material is what is producing the methane. So moving forward on phase two B, phase three and phase four. It will be the most economical way and the safest way to just remove the, remove the source, get rid of it. Source is gone, methane generation is done. I'll Brett talk a bit more than here in a second. But the methane we've seen is is isolated, it's in pockets throughout the site, it's not moving, so it's pretty contained to where it's at. So if we remove the organic material in the undeveloped areas before developed, the 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 intent is that by removing that fuel for the methane, the methane doesn't exist. The the homes that already exist, we, that that that's a very complicated approach. We're going to have to do several, you know, probably mockups designs to to deal with that. So we're kind of looking at the site as kind of a, you know, basically dividing the site in half for for dealing with methane, the new construction that hasn't done yet. We'll deal with methane by removing the bark with some other. Measures in place to just ensure that, you know, the homes remain safe, even if we've removed the bark. And the homes that currently exist, we're going to have to, you know, do some more complex engineering controls. I'll let Brett talk in here in a second, but there's nothing I want to just write. No, we've, we've tested all the homes quite a bit. We even did another round last week where we literally tested every single crawl space garage of every single home. And we had no methane detection. So methane is only really dangerous in a confined space. And we have no methane intrusion at all in the in the existing homes. We just have methane in the ground. So with that, if you have more methane questions, I can have Brett jump in.
That's, that's all I had. Thank you. That, I mean, that's good enough what you just described for me anyway.
Counselor Causey. You're mute also.
Thank you. Before I ask the question, I'd like to ask the city attorney's office, I believe I can ask questions. As a counselor, but if the the case is appealed, I believe I have to disclose those questions to the council. Is that correct?
So ex officio, you just don't vote if you do ask questions. That would constitute an experte contact. However, it could be part of the record as well. So if you can remember the questions that you ask, that would be the best way to go about it. But that that does add that complication to it. So your correction that we need to make sure that you disclose it as part of an expertise conduct disclosure to the council.
Thank you. I will go ahead then. One of my questions is, I believe that you have, based on the reports that were included. I believe you have twenty six permanent methane monitoring locations and two temporary. And my question is, how long does the monitoring go on? And I know you're going to try and mitigate the methane production. And the second question is. In in the designated park area. Is that an area where there are any concentrations of that?
I'll, I'll let Brett jump in. He can explain the the monitoring points, what, you know, the longevity of them, how long they'll be there for. The park will be. All the organic material in the park will be removed with the removal of the organic material for the rest of the site. So. The park, right now, the park is, you know, there are, there's definitely methane in the proposed location of the park. But that, all that organic material will be removed with the operation we hope to commence on with this this summer. So. We will, anywhere we currently have not developed or goal is to completely remove the best possible, best of my ability. All the organic. So we will not leave, we will not leave any organic material in the park and say, ah, it's a park, we don't care. No, no, no. We're going to remove all the organic material throughout the rest of the site that is undeveloped to ensure that there is no future methane generation. And then I'll let Brett jump in, I'll let Brett talk about as far as the the wells, what they're there for, and how long they're going to be there for and what their purposes.
Yeah, thanks, Levi. My name is Brett Waldron. I'm a geologist with PBS Environmental and Engineering. Got brought on board with this project last year. In August, even though this project was ongoing before then, but I got brought on as a team member at that point, right before we installed. The additional monitoring points that you're referring to. That's part of our remedial investigation. Fancy word for us determining where methane is, if it's migrating and what risks it presents to current and future residents. It's part of an iterative process, working with DEQ to determine what the risk is. They like to see things completed in a certain way and data presented to them. That basically addresses all their questions, similar to how you guys like to, you know, have your questions answered. They they want to know what is the methane? How high are the concentrations? Where are they? Is it moving? And so for us to determine that. We have installed. The set of borings and we've installed monitoring points and we're currently. Checking those levels every two weeks in accordance with the user request. So that we can determine what those concentrations do throughout the site with seasonality, weather fluctuations. So that we can feel confident in our conclusions of what the methane is doing. And so far. These points have demonstrated that the methane seems to be localized. Does not seem to be migrating offsite, seems to coincide with locations of former fill and placement of the former log ponds. And their variability within the former log ponds themselves. But we have, as Levi alluded to earlier, we just last week completed another round of crawl space monitoring. And also collected data from the monitoring points. And so far, we've seen, even despite the methane concentrations in soil, we have not seen anything underneath the crawl spaces. So. It's a part of. Making DEQ comfortable with the data. So if I were to answer your question of how long will they be there? That's still to be determined. We see this as a. Ongoing project, at least for the existing homes. DEQ is likely to want to see some additional assessment to provide them the level of comfort. You know, additional monitoring of confined spaces and homes and potentially some sort of corrective actions to make sure that. In off cases, if nothing were to make it in the crawl space, that there's. No risk to residents. So we're still working through the details on that. So we're we're through the the preliminary remedial investigation, but we identified some data gaps that we need to close the gaps on. And and then working into. Potential remediation mitigation design from there. I hope that answers your question.
And yes, would it be safe to conclude that that monitoring will continue as long as it's required by DEQ?
That is correct, as long. That is correct. As long as it's required by DEQ.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question. Um, I, I'm aware of some HOA agreements outside of Oregon that have a limitation on the number of units within, within the HOA that are allowable to be rentals at any given time. Have you considered or investigated the possibility of those sorts of HOA requirements to maintain um owner occupancy, at least at some level?
Absolutely. We are in the process of trying to find every legal avenue possible to prevent, eliminate the, the, the rental in, uh, investor. Um, I'll call it a problem, cause it is a problem. Um, the only concern that I personally have is, let's say, someone buys a townhome for me, they move into it. Um, for whatever reason, they need to relocate. Um, the market does not allow them to resell that townhome. And they need to rent it out, or they're gonna be gone for a year and they want to come back to it. Um, the concern I have with putting type of restrictions on rentals is the negative consequence to, you know, someone who might really legitimately need to rent it out just for a year or two because they relocate and they want to come back or they can't sell it. And then, you know, the only choice is to rent it or close on it. So there are just some tricky things there to ensure that it doesn't have the negative consequence of of, of, of someone who buys the property to live in it. And then for whatever reason, they, they need to turn into rental. I don't want to. I don't want to make that person suffer from us trying to prevent an investor buying it upfront. So we are looking at different avenues, you know, potentially even deed restrictions. Um, you know, there's a, there's a whole gamut of things that we're, we're working on with, with Habitat and, and my legal team and my realtors to see what we can and cannot do. But the goal is to minimize, if not eliminate, the, the investor rental problem that we saw in phase one and phase two.
Are there any other questions? Um, well then, thank you very much. Um, and I imagine you'll be around to listen to the rest of it if, if we manage to bring something up.
Yep, I'll be here.
Um, uh, the next, the next stage is to move to uh Counselor Cazi.
Thank you. Two slow hands. I'm sorry. Um, that question, I was able to tour the homes when they were initially opened. And I was very impressed with the amenities that you were able to put in the initial homes. Um, have you had to cut back on those significantly in order to limit costs?
No, that's, and that's, you know, that, that comes back to the, I mean, literally, when I say it's a daily battle, it truly is a daily battle because it is. It's one of those ones where, you know, we're trying to, we're trying to keep costs down, but we don't want to, we don't want to sell a home that someone can't be proud of. So, you know, we don't want to, we, we want to keep the hard surface countertops, you know, whether it's, it's a granite or it's um a quartz countertop. You know, that is something that I will not change. Um, yeah, you know, it's, you know, it's, it's definitely several thousand dollars more than, you know, a, you know, for my core plastic laminate countertop. But I truly believe that, 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 that those laminate countertops are, they're shit, they're garbage. So I would, I'd rather, you know, still, you know, charge a little bit more for those, for that. Um, you know, we're using, you know, LVP. It's a, it's a durable product for um water. Um, you know, it's better than laminate. It's a little bit more money, but no, those, there are certain things that we really truly, I mean, actually honestly, I haven't, I haven't even considered. I have, I have, it hasn't even come to my mind to, to cut back on, on stuff like that. Um, and with the townhome approach, you know, we're not looking cutting those items to save money. That's why we want to do the townhome. It's like, where, where can we save money on the development side, on the, 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 the skeleton of structure, but not have to significantly change the inside of the home. So the townhomes will all still have the hard surface countertops, where there's granite quartz. Um, we'll do the LVP flooring. So if you walk in the townhomes versus what you walk in now, you, you won't see difference. They'll, they'll have the exact same finishes. It'll just obviously be a, a smaller floor plan. In some cases, it might be a bigger floor plan. We did build a couple of small homes in phase one and phase two. But the inside of the townhomes will, will, will be the exact same finishes and style as the, as the, the homes we've already built.
I just wanted to clarify as far as presentation, this is the opportunity for the commission to ask questions of the applicant and you, you will not have an opportunity later in the public hearing. So uh, this is your chance to ask the questions. Once the hearing's closed, you're going to deliberation. Uh, you can ask questions of staff and clarifying questions on the staff report, those types of things. But you, you, uh, it would not be appropriate that time to go back to the applicant and ask additional questions.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Bernardino, did you have a question?
Um, I did. I was also wondering if we were going to have a break at some point.
That's what I was just about to say a few minutes ago.
I guess I was just gonna ask, we received, um, we received an email from a community member um shortly before the meeting this evening. And I was wondering if Mr. Miller has had a chance to see that and if he'd like to respond to it.
Oh, yeah, I read it. Um, that's, you know, one of the unfortunate things about trying to do this development, um, like even pricing down, you know, I, you know, it's me, my wife, we own the company. We have a couple, you know, employees. Um, so we rely on, I relied heavily on my real estate agents to communicate um things to residents. Um, it has come to my attention here not too long ago that some of that communication wasn't done well. So we are working internally on how to provide better communication to the residents. Um, you know, we don't, you know, I'm not a giant company. I don't have multiple divisions. I don't have multiple people. It's, it's for the most part, it's just me, my wife and a couple of key employees. Um, so at the end of the day, you know, I only have so much time. So we did rely on the agents to provide a lot of communication. Um, again, the clear, it was clear the communication wasn't done to the standards we want. Over the last two months, we've been sending out uh, the best we're ability, been sent out bi-weekly updates to the residents. That we've been attaching on its doors to update them on the methane, on, you know, where we're at in the development. So our goal moving forward is to continue those bi-weekly updates that were hand delivered to each house. Um, hopefully, you know, we'll be able to get better representation from the realtor side, moving forward to where the communication is, is more streamlined. So at the end of the day, you know, someone hasn't called me up and I was like, you know, I ignored them. Um, I, I relied on other people and, you know, it's unfortunate that some people haven't been communicated with, with correctly. And that's just, you know, the nature of the beast and trying to, you know, what worked, what didn't work. And as I said in my presentation, you know, there have been things that have not worked and I recognize that. And moving forward, we are definitely making significant changes to ensure that the mistakes that were made in phase one and phase two are not repeated. And, and communication is certainly one of those areas that we are working heavily on to, to, to correct and do a better job.
Hey, thank you. Um, with that, well, actually, before I, before I go into that, um, uh, Mr. Workman, there is a point later in our agenda where there is an opportunity for rebuttal. So we will be hearing a little bit more from Mr. Miller.
Yeah, the, so any of the comments raised by the public, he'll be able to address those, but his rebuttal will be limited to just that. So I, I just want to make sure that you'd say something that we'll be able to have access to later. I just want to make sure the commission was clear that. Yes, now's, now's the appropriate time to ask the questions.
Okay, Mr. Workman as well.
Thank you. Um, Commissioner Yoder, do you have something more before we go to a break?
Yeah, no, just real quick, um, Levi, I know that I do understand the challenges, but I also remember back in twenty eighteen that um, let's see, um, Counselor Eric Neiman wanted the DEQs, um, a clearing for the DEQ before everything proceeded. And then it was, um, you pretty much vehemently disagreed with that, you know, said the time is now to do it. And a consultant um doesn't probably hold as much weight as what the DEQ of clearly, a consultant doesn't hold as much weight as a DEQ uh requirement to do. So, um, knowing what you know now, I don't know if you feel that it was still a good move to move forward, knowing that the methane turned out to be a much bigger problem. And it really was, um, it really was kind of brought up that there could be problems uh before this started. So I just hate to have people think that this was completely out of the blue. Um, the concerns, it was more than just concerns with uh somebody's buried a jitney down there somewhere um, and that kind of thing. So, um, that's it. I do want to thank you for your time and for your efforts too.
Um, I will respond to that again. Um, uh, uh, we, the project was approved in September of two thousand and eighteen. October two thousand and eighteen, I entered into the DEQ voluntary cleanup program. So there was no delay bringing DEQ onboard. I didn't wait until two thousand and twenty to call DEQ. I called DEQ, you know, the conversation started immediately after the approval of the subdivision, September two thousand and eighteen. It took about a month, of course, months of DEQ, but I believe the voluntary cleanup program, um, agreement was signed in October two thousand and eighteen. I don't know if it was like October eighteenth or whatever, but within six weeks of the subdivision being approved in two thousand and eighteen, we entered into it and grew in DEQ. Um, so DEQ's been on board from day one. Um, at no point was methane ever, ever brought up. Had someone told me to test for methane, I certainly would have. Um, I wish I had. I mean, this is, you know, not gonna lie, it's a mess. It's, it's been a nightmare. I've, you know, it's, it's financially been a disaster. Professionally, it's been extremely difficult. Personally, it's, you know, I mean, it's, 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 it's been, it's been, it's been a fucking nightmare. So yes, had I known about methane back in two thousand and eighteen, I most likely would not have bought the project. Um, it is a Herculean task to deal with. Um, at this point, you know, we have to move forward. Um, there are residents who, you know, we need to complete studies, we need to do mitigation. Um, those mitigation costs are gonna be expensive. Um, the only way to pay for those mitigation costs is to build more homes, sell homes. I mean, I have to have money to pay for those costs. So, you know, someone's like, well, I didn't just walk in the project now, why even bother? Well, I, I can't. There's, there's sixty homes out there that, you know, we need to, to do work on. And, and, oh, there's a hundred and thirty people, hundred and thirty families in this community that you need homes. So um, obviously, I'm in this position now. I'm gonna finish it. I'm gonna do what I need to do to make it right. But no, had, had someone brought up methane back in two thousand and eighteen, which, which no one did, um, we would have looked into it, we would have addressed it, and I'm most likely probably not about the property. But even DEQ didn't address methane or bring methane up until, you know, well into two thousand and twenty, and they were on board since October two thousand and eighteen. So the, the, the notion that methane was brought up and that I ignored and said the time is now is, is not accurate. Um, the stuff that we said, you know, we, the studies that we did are currently still proving true that there is no other contamination on the site. It's just methane that we're dealing with. So I stand by my decision back in September two thousand and eighteen to move forward because the methane was, was unknown then, it wasn't even brought up. So I don't know if that answered your question, but that, that's, that's how I feel about that.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Um, I'm sorry, your name's not showing up, but you raised your hand. You have something to add to that? Oh, you're muted.
Thank you. Um, this is Brett Waldron and it, it, with PBS. I, I wasn't there uh when Levi purchased the property. But I, I know some of the more specifics of how that acquisition could come to be and how he did not know there was methane. And if you guys care to know more, I can explain that from a, a technical standpoint, but.
At this point, I think that's secondary to the decision that we need to make at this point, but uh, thank you, and we know your resource if that ever becomes necessary for some reason. Um, so with that, I would like to propose a five-minute break for everybody to take a stretch and do what they need to do. And we'll be back and have uh public testimony.